Yeah, I did, and then I'm going to go back. And I missed it, but then she was there.
You have an agenda? You have an agenda?
Yeah, we've got a trade this night up there. I've worked today.
Everyone stands. June two thousand twenty-four, County six. County Commission meeting will now be in session with Mayor Richard Wendell will preside.
Thank you, Phil. Take this opportunity to welcome you all here tonight. Let's see a crowd turning out to watch their government in action. First thing I'll do tonight is, if I may impose, and I don't set this up for time, we have several people that are very articulate in delivering our thanks to our maker, and I'm going to recognize the Mr. Cheryl Harper to the tenor of occasion tonight.
Our family, Phil, we thank you so much. We come to you this evening with a heart of gratitude for the ability, God, that we have to serve you. For all the people of the citizens of Southern County, Lord, we're grateful. We pray that, God, that you will give us wisdom and that you will give us favor in the decisions that we make. We love you and praise you, honor you and glorify you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yes, sir. Everyone salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad we have everyone in our city, so we're fine. As clerk, would you take the roll? Roll call. Everyone check in. As clerk, take the roll.
Twenty-two present, two absent.
Thank you. Next up is on our agenda, guest paper and appointments and confirmation, and we're going to delay that a minute. We've got some of the folks on the way and coming, and so if I lay, I'd like at this time to recognize this is not a tour to make an announcement. And I know we have things here for these qualifications, and we want to get it right. Ever, so we'll fill in your recognition.
Thank you so much. On your desk, I handed out a flyer inviting you all to our upcoming public engagement meeting. Fancy word for just information sharing meeting. We're going to host it at Southern East High School in the cafeteria. And this is in reference to our Outdoor Recreation and Sustainable Development Land Use Plan. If you recall, you all asked the planning department and the plan commission to develop the land use plan for the South Houston River Corridor. We have been working really hard on it, and on some of the other day-to-day duties. But we are going to host this second meeting, we promised the community. We would love to have you attend. Last time, other commissioners attended, and I think it was really well received by the community to have their support there. I believe most of the ten commissioners will be there. But it will be next Thursday at Southern East High School from four to seven. So we hope to catch folks coming off of work. And those that may get off later, we try to, there's not really the perfect time to catch everyone. But that's what was available to us. And so if you can come, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. And as I mentioned, we have folks coming to us. And I hate to delay you that are here to honor our top students in the county, but we've just delayed for just a short while. We'll redo that. So I'm going to go ahead and go on with the agenda now. And we're fully prepared to recognize the outstanding young people who are going to do that. So next on your agenda is appointments. There are no appointments by the county mayor at this time. Next is approval of county commission minutes of May ninth for procession, resounding gearing in May sixteenth for regular session. Motion by Gardner, section by Crawford. For approval as published, any discussion, corrections, or additions. Seeing none, we'll red vote. Okay, that's on board. Board open, cast your vote on the approved, the motion to approve minutes of our previous meeting. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change vote? As clerk, take the roll.
Twenty-two yes, two absent.
The minutes are approved and adopted as published. And see on your agenda that you can go to, to the South County clerk to review those at any time. Next up, we will go ahead and appoint the number of papers. I hear the recommendations for appointing the number of papers. So at this time, I will make them out of court or reading the number of papers.
Santana Ainsen, Melody Shong, Adanolphy Pearson, Lori Angers, Melanie R. Barker, Emily Brooke Jacobs Bailey, Judith A. Bellany, Joshua Thomas Moore, Jessica Bowery, Sydney Briscoe, Adele Brooks, James Michael Brown, Jordan Carrier, Amy Alpharder, Heather Carter, Michelle Coleman, Nantanya, Nantanya, Rochelle Conley, Elizabeth A. Cox, Mark C. Easterly, Ginger F. Edwards, Andrea Grasnick Kleiner, Joshua C. Fortner, Collette B. George, Donna Hale, William Joel Edges the Second, Diana L. Hughes, James Earl Jenkins, Marissa A. King, Kyle Jacob Kowalski, Crystal L. McNeddy, Christina Becklmore, Laura A. Morgan Gilroy, Gordon L. Oliver, Trina Osborne, Faith M. Phillips, Martin Joseph Potter the Fourth, Angel L. Pruitt, Elizabeth A. Shelton, Michelle Smith, Savannah Taylor, Nikki J. Taylor, Taylor Trent, Rachel Nicole Reed, Michael C. Bone, Todd J. Walnuts, Mark Henry Webb, Jerry A. Williams, and Jessica E. Lewis.
You've heard the list, and anyone object? To anyone who doesn't see none, we have a motion to adopt. Director Carter, second officer Collins, any discussion? No one yet. And board open, cast your vote on motions to approve the number of papers as presented. Everyone voted? Carter, did you make the?
I did.
Okay. You don't want to vote anybody off?
The what?
You don't want to bop anybody off the list?
Oh, no.
Okay. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change vote? As clerk, take the roll.
Yes, two.
Yes. Yes, please.
Twenty-two yes, one is staying, two absent.
I received necessary majority of the list is adopted as.
One absent.
One absent. Thank you. We're now down to a public comment. I'm going to ask for a few minutes while I check on where we are. I don't want to keep people here unnecessarily that have come to honor outstanding folks. There are a few of them that didn't, but tell them we have a lot of return. We should just be a few minutes. We will begin. We're in recess.
Yes, it was very. Yeah, I'll re-announce that. Three one is going to stay.
You want it hotter, you want to go?
You want it a lot.
Let's see.
Um, he's okay. This was Tuesday. You know, my wife, she wants it to be a surprise. And then two looks so much like it at the end.
Making sure the cameras are at a good, at a decent battery. Making sure that the light is.
I pray she won't be watching. Um, won't be watching. Yeah, she told me that. It's a.
I said I'm here, but I don't know.
In here, back there. Laura, you in there?
The party.
Have you been? Have you had a good time?
Yes.
All right, what do I? You're nice.
In a bar. I did it.
It was our thing. Okay, here we go.
Got it based on how we find an order.
Thank you. Thank you, and I appreciate your diligence. We have, we've experienced some hits with difficulties. I'm going to go on with the agenda. And again, apologize to these young folks and families who we want to do this right where we do it. So we're going to go on with the agenda. And under a performance, we have a performance to the Southern County Library Board. The fellow vacancy and gentleman's name was Lucas Gentry. Has been nominated, and I recommend to you that we confirm Mr. Gentry as a member of the Library Board. He is here tonight, if you have any questions. I recommend that to you in a positive way. Andrew, you want to?
Okay, you're right now. Yes, this was supposed to be on our agenda for May, and this appointment was made, it was granted, it was advertised, everything was done, and his application was accepted. So he'd stand up for Mr. Gentry, give everybody away. That's him, if you want to come up and ask him a question you may. This would like this to be done tonight so they can have their July meeting with a full.
So with that, I commend Mr. Gentry. Thank you for joining us, and we do last the commission to vote on this recommendation from the county mayor to appoint Mr. Gentry to the Southern County Library Board. Again, thank you. As clerk, since we don't have that on the board, would you have a roll call vote to appoint Mr. Gentry to the Southern County Library Board?
Aker?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Farm?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Crossline?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Clever?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Block?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Means?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Slagle? Accent? Stidham? Accent? Benover?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you want to change the vote? Twenty-two yes, two absent.
I received necessary majority of Mr. Gentry is appointed to the Library Board of Southern County who execute the documents to follow the clerk. And thank you, Mr. Cross, for bringing back our attention. I will say now, the reason I've, we've diverted from the agenda and to have our special recognition of any time in progress, nobody is indispensable except my sister. And she is on vacation this week. So I hope when she returns that she'll tell her how important she is to the smooth operation of the Southern County Commission. Your parents and family, if you will bear with us, we'll do a little bit of more county business here. And so we will adjourn for our public comment section. Mr. clerk, we bring the list. I would, we invite the public to address the question on items of their interest. We do have an internal rule that we try to abide by, and that is a. We do, uh, have a, an internal rule, um, that we try to abide by, and that is, uh, three minutes each. And those of you who have attended regularly know that I don't enforce that really strictly. I'd like for you to encourage young people, uh, we, we make allowance where we need to. Uh, but I would say, uh, let don't try to repeat each other. Uh, we, we only, uh, are allowed to have thirty minutes of, in public comment section. And again, we don't repeat that if people are personal things to tell, and once you think it's important. And I will, uh, say that I, uh, your comments are important to us, your opinion is important to us. But we do try to keep our remarks not on a certain basis, but on the basis of, uh, helping the teachers do their job and helping them hear what their constituents, uh, think. So, uh, we're adjourned to public session. Uh, Mr. Camille Peters is the first to sign up. You're, you're right now, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And, uh, and I ask the people behind me, if you work for the Department of Education and you have a second job, can you please stand? And I know, I know several more that are, they have a second job and are working tonight, so they couldn't be here. So I wanted to speak for them and for us, because I'm included. So, again, my name is Camille Peters. I'm a music and chorus teacher at Rock Springs Elementary School. This is my ninth year teaching in Sullivan County. The reason I have to let them over tonight is to speak for the employees of the Sullivan County School District that don't have the opportunity to be here themselves due to having a second job. During that time in the county, I've heard many of my coworkers say they're headed to their second job after a full day of working at school. I deepened my curiosity about just how many people need to have a second job to make ends meet. I decided to take a poll to find out just how many did have a second job. And when I posted the poll, um, the responses came flooding in. It was quickly up to more than fifty responses in about twenty minutes. Even teachers that I've never had the opportunity to meet began to share their stories with me. The number of people that have reached out to me is now over two hundred and thirty. I feel confident that there are more than a full that reach out of the one hun- one thousand, one hundred eighty-seven employees that, uh, for Sullivan County that would act in order to have that reach. Here are some quotes from messages that I received. One says, "I work at Carver Barrel on weekends to pay for bills and groceries since the cost of utilities, rent, and groceries have gone up so tremendously over the past few years." Another says, "I'm an assistant at Sullivan County and I also work for the Walmart delivery driver. When I work for two to three hours a day at Walmart, I make almost double what I make thirty county in less time." Another one says, "I leave school every day to go to my second job. I usually work ten to fifteen hours per week there. Often, I don't get home from work until nine to ten P.M. for the day." Another person says, "I work at summer camp, I work for retail job, I sell blood plasma twice a week." And last, the one, the last one I include out of all the ones I have, says, "I worked for Sullivan County for six years. During that time, I worked as a nanny at Girls' Meet and for an Uber driver. Last summer, we decided as a family that I needed to look for something else. Now, I switched to another system, and I was sad to leave, but financially, I had no other options." So this research has been really eye-opening, and I hope that it's opened your eyes as well. Please vote to approve the school board's proposed funding budget. I know we keep hearing that we'll never make as much as the city schools, but as Mr. Carter has repeatedly said, that doesn't mean we've learned to give up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peters, since you're close, would you give us your, our record, our electronic address, your address?
Yes, it's one twenty Ray Space Center, Dog Unit One oh five, Crystal.
Thank you, I forgot to ask for that. Next up, Katie McGee. Ms. McGee, would you, uh, give us your name and address for our electronic address?
My name is Katie McGee, and I live at four twenty Blue Haven Road.
Thank you, you're right now.
Thank you for taking the opportunity to hear us speak tonight. My name is Katie McGee, and I've been teaching in Sullivan County for sixteen years. Before that, my entire family and I all attended school and graduated from the Sullivan County School District. Sullivan County Schools has always been my home. There are hundreds of educators just like me with a fierce loyalty to our school system and to the students that we serve. These educators have not been erased since two thousand twenty-one, and that has been the only raise in my memory since my tenure in Sullivan County Schools began. No cost of living increases are given, even though the cost of living in our current economy is nearly impossible to keep up with. A large percentage of Sullivan County employees work more than one job to make ends meet, and yet, they are still dedicated to serving the students in our district. And when I speak of educators, I mean all faculty and support staff involved with your children daily. You know that in addition to teaching your children, we love them, nurture them, encourage them, support them, and advocate for them. And that is what all of this boils down to, advocating for your children. Because in advocating for educators, we are also advocating for children. There's a direct correlation between years of experience and educator impact. With such a discrepancy in pay, what will keep a seasoned teacher from seeking fair wages elsewhere in neighboring districts instead of staying in Sullivan County? If you do not vote to approve the school board's budget, I fear that this would create a revolving door of new teachers enticed by higher starting pay, further governor's mandate, but choosing to leave for other systems and more equitable pay quickly thereafter. As little as creating a mass exodus of seasoned and dedicated educators. Is that the caliber of education that you want for your children? The number of students lost in Sullivan County Schools has been mentioned more than once in recent meetings. There was even an editorial referencing such in this morning's paper. Have you considered the correlation between that number and the conversation we are having right now? But yet, have you also seen the news that in spite of such a difference in funding, both Sullivan County and the Kinsport City Score Systems have outpaced the state average in our third and fourth graders proficiency in, on this year's C class? These are the numbers that we should be talking about, and these are the numbers that we should be focused on working together to continue to improve. I said a few moments ago that advocating for educators is advocating for children. The conditions in which your educators serve are the same conditions in which your children learn. Please choose to provide your children with the best education possible by ensuring that they have access to the best educators possible in our school district. Please choose to approve the school board's proposed budget to compensate these educators fairly and to retain them as educators in Sullivan County Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, um, recognize Lori Rollins. Ms. Rollins, your name and address, please.
My name is Lori Rollins, and I live at three forty Hidden Valley Road.
You're right now.
Thank you. So my name is Lori Rollins, and I'm an assistant principal referred to as a head teacher at Rock Springs Elementary School. I've been employed by the Sullivan County Department of Education for fifteen years and attended Sullivan County Schools before that. It's disappointing to come to these meetings and hear words being rearranged or a false interpretation for one's own agenda. The finger pointing, name-calling tactics that I've seen amongst adults in this room is sickening. The focus has been lost. Deliberate comments were made to degrade administrators, teachers, and that our school board is being mean to us. The race was not promised to us by the school board. However, we were told by them that we were worth a shot to try to make it happen. The professionalism of our school board, the intelligent representation we have from Mr. Lodge, Mr. Carter, and Chairman Mack Price are above approach. Our hands-on lead team, uh, they serve our district with multiple assignments, and they wear many hats. Retaining our wonderful educators that go above and beyond for kids is the goal. We need to show our employees their work voting for and allow them the reassurance that the county is behind them. Our school board and central office keep this goal in the forefront daily when they are making decisions. In previous years, actually since two thousand seventeen, the Sullivan County Commission has taken several million dollars from the Sullivan County Department of Education's budget. Taxes were raised in order to give the money to the Sullivan County Department of Education, and then it was removed from our budget. I'd love to know where my refund is for the tax increase for education that's taken away. I'd also love to know how many of you have actually gone into the schools in your zones to walk the halls and through the buildings to recognize the needs. Our schools are in need of major repairs, and that has your name on it. The fund balance has been used for much-needed upgrades to keep these buildings going. Now we're going to be in a peculiar situation since this went to raises. I understand the county commission has so many things to fund, like education, a highway, the sheriff's department, and a much-needed new jail. Did you realize that seventy percent of all incarcerated adults cannot read at a fourth grade level? Did you know fifty percent of inmates are dyslexic? Did you also know that Sullivan County Department of Education has a group of educators leading the charge on dyslexia in our area? We are teaching surrounding systems such as ETSU this weekend, Knoxville County Schools. We've even been invited to speak at the State of Tennessee Literacy Conference in Nashville. See a correlation between inmates and educators? Funding education directly impacts the inmate population. Your educators are their chance to aid, to, at a young age, to learn and beat the odds. Our goal is simple, do what is best for children, period. We want to be a place that is embodying for new enrollment in our families. Become a place that develops infrastructure, gains students, promotes schools, instead of tearing them down. The bantering back and forth needs to stop immediately. Chuck Carter is the person to bridge this gap. So when you meet him halfway, if we want to raise the bar like our neighboring school systems, then it starts in this room today, right now. Support one of your largest employers, and might I add, probably your largest taxpayers and your voters. Thank you.
The next person we have on our list is Megan Householder. If you come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Megan Householder, live at three three four Woodbridge Road, and fresh to Sullivan County.
Thank you, you're right now.
Those are hard acts to follow, I'm just here to have a conversation. I don't want to touch on a crime rate. It's a secret, Sullivan County has a high crime rate. We're actually higher than the national average at sitting last I checked, twenty-four point one, per one hundred thousand. We got this for our kids. We have to. I came to Sullivan County off chance. I have played a little bit in Sullivan County, from Washington, but when I got my job here, I realized, man, I love this county. And I want to support these kids, I want to be here for these kids. But I got here, and I got bills to pay, and I pay taxes. And in August, I'll have my ass trying to be the best I can be for Sullivan County students. And yet, I may not be able to stay with Sullivan County to pay back those student loans. We're running our highly qualified teachers away because we don't want to support them. We don't value them, we don't think they're important. And that kind of means we don't think our children are important. We're business people here, and we know that when families choose to move into our community, they look at the schools. They look to see, is my child going to get the best education here? And I'll tell you, we work hard, harder than you can imagine. I had a full face of makeup on today. I did, I sweated off this morning. My hair looks good, it's gone. Chasing around kindergartners today for summer camp. And trying to very best to just make it fun and make them want to come. But you know what, you can only beat somebody down so often. As my colleagues have said, there's been some kindergartner things said in this room. That's sad. It's sad that we have to reteach adults to the adults and to support where is important, which is our kids, that's our future. If we want this crime rate to go down, we need to keep our highly qualified teachers here and not staying here. Supporting this pay raise would help me stay here, it would help a lot of teachers stay here. We're bringing in so many of these things to try to be above the pack. Chuck Carter's working on blended learning to where we can pull some of those students back that ran away during COVID because those were uncharted times. We're ready to bring them back, we're trying to bring them back, we're trying to entice them. But we can only entice them with highly qualified educators. That's what applications ask for, are you highly educated, are you highly qualified? We are. We should be paid for that. Interesting thought. We also recognize, I, I remember specifically, and forgive me if you're in this room, I have terrible things. But I remember watching the news during COVID, um, someone of the county saying that we train teachers to lead. And that's what we do. We train educators, we get these new kids coming in out of school, this is my second career, I'm old. And you guys have done a pretty good job training me. Now I'm ready to get paid, just like a lot of my colleagues, we're ready to get paid. And yet, during, during those times of COVID, we're talking about term, not how to educate these kids, not how to feed these kids. We're talking about schools that need to be repaired, and yet, discussing anything and everything else not to support these schools. I don't know that the money is being spent where it's most valuable, our future. This is our future, guys, our kids are our future. And we can support them now, and we could keep these highly qualified teachers, and we can drop them into being super successful adults that want to stay in Sullivan County. Or we can support criminals by not supporting these students. And we could say, hey, you got a space in the jail. No worries, it's no secret. I'll, I'll tell you a little story. Going to Nashville, Tennessee, trying to buy a student fit, I didn't have to show an I.D. I have to show an I.D. here. We can help these kids avoid a lack of crime by supporting them through supporting our teachers and our school system. Thank you.
Next up, um, on our list is Rachel McGee, Ms. McGee. Name, name and address, please.
Rachel McGee, two forty Chesterfield.
Thank you, you're right now.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the teachers and staff of Sullivan County Department of Education. I was prepared to speak today partially in your defense by recognizing that you represent many people, not only teachers. You have the responsibility of listening to the people and making decisions based on what majority means. I wanted to convey that I understood that this was a financial decision. Nobody has a personal agenda until I realized we're forgiven. Sullivan County Department of Education is not here to pad the pockets of its staff. The fifteen percent raise that we're asking for is going to be absorbed by insurance increases by almost six percent. And we've not had a cost of living raise in almost three years. So when you add those numbers together, it's extremely clear that there's no padding in pockets that is taking place. I have watched countless times throughout my twenty-year career with Sullivan County, our qualified teachers leave for no reason other than higher pay. We have lost amazing coaches, many Sullivan County alumna to neighboring districts simply because they can't afford not to go. Losing many coaches also means losing our best student athletes. Many of these kids are depending upon sports to provide an avenue to a college education. Often, their siblings follow them to surrounding schools. And unfortunately, this is just one example of how we are losing students to neighboring districts due to teacher pay. We strive to maintain our homes, our vehicles, and even our relationships with people. Often, this maintenance requires a financial obligation, but never do we ask, I'm not spending the money to put oil in my car, does it really need oil? I really don't want to take money away from my dining out fund to pay for oil, that would be ludicrous. Why then is it so difficult to understand why you need to appropriate funds out of your budget to provide teachers with the raises that we deserve rather than depleting our reserve? Whether you think we need the money or not, the students of Sullivan County deserve the best teachers. Other districts are willing to pay teachers. Other districts are willing to pay teachers appropriately to retain them for their students. Why do you think that Sullivan County students are unharbored for the best? My daughter, Mommy Kate, who weighs 1.5. She's six and she attends Sullivan County schools. The other day, she asked me for a toy, and I said, no, we can't buy her right now. And she really wanted it, so she asked her grandparents for some chores, and she did various things around the house to earn the money, and she asked me to post some of her old toys on Facebook Marketplace, and I did. And she figured out exactly how to come up with the money that she needed, and she was so excited, it was crazy, and she was making plans and said what she was going to do with her toy, and how her parents were going to play with her toy. And the day that we were to go get the toy, I called my best friend laughing, I said, there is no way I'm getting her a toy. She thinks she's getting that toy, but really, she is not getting that toy. I mean, I'm in charge, right? I hold all of the cards. If I say no, the answer is no. Does that sound like a promoter scenario? Unfortunately, this is exactly the rumor that's going around as to what you plan to do to the Sullivan County teachers. I suppose we'll find out whether that rumor is true or not when you pass your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm ready to complete our list. I don't ever get to come and sign up chief, but you're right now. Give us your name and address, please.
My name's Rodney Pajet, 1125 Galveston, Charles, Tennessee. I would tell you, I'm obviously not a teacher, so I'm coming at this from a different point of view. I've got two sons in our system, in the Sullivan County system, you've met them, most of you. I would love to get up here and talk about numbers I've put out on post-letting about how we've increased our department funding, or at least what we budgeted for it last year versus what we actually paid in out-of-revenue expenditures the year before. We did the same thing with the sheriff's department, we gave $1 million raised out of reserve funds to the sheriff's department last September, we passed the bond for this level, but I'm going to go a different route from here. Whenever my son and I agreed, starting to the eighth grade year, that year in COVID, we were going to have algebra. Luckily, we weren't going to have algebra because the algebra teacher went to Johnson City School System a couple weeks before classes started. They started to not have algebra at all, and we went to school board, we spoke, my son, Dad did, I did. They were able to come up with a video of a way for students to get algebra in eighth grade through video, and it worked out, but that was a loss. My eldest son Nicholas had a wonderful English teacher at Central in sixth grade, and last year, he left to go to youth colleges. I'm not saying money was the reason why, I don't know, but I can imagine it was practical. My oldest son had a wonderful chemistry teacher, he'd never had chemistry before, he knew the first thing about chemistry going into this class, probably. He got a five out of five on his EOC, and she was wonderful, she was great. She would even talk to him about possibly starting in underwater robotics team at one time. Summer goes five, he gets four. We are losing very important people in our system on the higher ends of this pay scale, the people that have 10, which can be difficult experience, the people that solidify the system, the people that mentor the younger teachers, because we are not competitive with city. And I understand that we cannot stay committed with city just based on the way the law is now, which is my next thought. We have been able to get laws passed for private acts by going to the senate and house and state. We've been able to get laws passed that allow us to sell real property to nonprofits at nominal fees without bidding or anything else. Why can't we go to the same legislature and ask them to propose something in TISA that allows a state mandated system within the county that coexists with optional city systems to get a state direct funded stipend of $1,000 per student, or something along that line, to cover that gap so that our county system students are at the same level as our city systems, or at least close enough? I will put this in veterinary terms. As a veterinarian with a few years of experience, I know what it's like when the younger guys come in making close to what you're making and having not nearly as much of an idea of what we're doing. I also have experienced where your experience supports that, your technicians and that sort of thing are not getting paid enough, and then you wind up trying to replace them with kids that are a couple years out of high school. It makes for a very inefficient system, and that's unfortunately what happens here if you don't take care of the people that matter. So, I don't love the fact that we're doing this out of a fund balance, I will be honest. I think that you guys should help support this a little bit more than what we are. I think you should pump me up, that it's a commitment, I don't feel like we're getting that commitment. But if this is how it has to be, this is how it has to be, and I still would like for them to get this raised because I have seen how it has affected my family, my kids, and the kids around me. I guess, kind of, one last component to that is I know that we have projects coming up. We have work bids, plans at Sullivan East, at Eden Springs, at Mary Deew, at Sullivan Gardens. We always start to be planning for that right now, because obviously, if we're going on a downed fund balance, there's not going to be that big a down payment on that, so we need to start planning, which is something we haven't historically done well here. And I don't really want to hear the demonization stuff when it comes up, you know, it's coming. Thank you.
Now, public session, public conversation, public reading. Now we have, I'm going to go back on our kids, and then we have other. One playful thing we do, and this is recognize outstanding achievement as a county commission and a county mayor. We invite you all to stay and recognize these are very important people who have achieved very important milestones in their life, so. As I go over the podium and ask students to come up, and those of you in the commission, as we recognize these house students, if you come up and stand with them, have a official right with these students. Excuse me, I'll make sure to look. The first group will be Tennessee High, the commissioner, representative, here at Tennessee High, the committee of directors. And if I should like to have Paul Lestrange, the band major. Oh, there he is.
Mayor, he is not, he's in Japan.
In Japan? I'm going to go to the top. Global scholar, his representative of Tennessee High, the commission of Tennessee High, to make sure that this proclamation is delivered. Where I had Paul Lestrange, ranked number one academic student, now 280 students in the Tennessee High class, 2024. And where as Paul works in Dartmouth College, plans to nurture philosophy. And where as outside freshman, Paul highly involved in youth sports club, community organization. And where as a few of these include the Black and Green students, Black and Green students, Rosa, USA, and Skills Mary, criminal justice CSI. And where as has received Tennessee High's top academic expression recognition, graduate with the highest distinction. As less than other achievements, like awards into the first place of the region, thank those, where he enrolled in the Skills USA Criminal Justice CSI. I would recommend, in Arizona County, also have the Sullivan County Commission, hereby proclaim, June 24, 2024, as Paul Lestrange, in Sullivan County, along with others. And encourage also, join in celebrating Paul's particular leadership and outstanding contribution to Sullivan County. Not last, his commissioners, who delivers, should be student, with our great appreciation of his effort on being a member of the Sullivan County, and I congratulate his family and his speakers, while they're achieving this. Hey, you wish your luck, say that. Andrew, we will replace that minimum group, Frank will be. Thank you. Now, from Westbridge House School, Andrea Turner. President of Westbridge House School, and I guess I should have mentioned enough to learn, and you're aware of. Proclamation in honor of Anthony McCollum, outstanding academic. Where as Andrea Turner, thirty coaches, president, 4.55 GPA, thirty-two A.T.S. students, become Westbridge House School's veteran, retired to the academy. And where as Andrea Turner, thirty-one hours following credit, through the World of Fortune, fifteen eighteen hundred credits. Where as outside freshman, who was highly involved in ministry for the security activities. Where as widow, who is captain, two-time All-Conference athlete, from the Bureau of Marcy, Tennessee, soon government health, president of the people, vice president of National Order Society, and vice president of the Adver. And where as this Turner received the following honor, national rural small town scholar, 2023, American Legion Battalion, Bureau of State Development, National Development of American Revolution, Good Sense, Division Seven, most outstanding youth scholar, visiting the scholar in 270 hours of military service. I would recommend Mayor Richard Vunble on the head of Sullivan County Commission, hereby proclaim, along with others, June 24, 2024, that we include. And also, join in celebrating that, the leadership, outstanding contribution, congratulations.
Okay.
I hope you like the way that I'm treating you.
Obviously, there are a lot of first gear, and, sorry, but the only risk that I have to take is Sullivan County is such a great place to do education, and it's a good time. So, we've been, yeah, all the other ones, but thank you, guys, for making my career in Sullivan County, Sullivan County. I think that it's all of you guys, and thank you to Mark for putting this together, and all these people behind me that actually support you, my family, but thank you, guys.
Proclamation in honor of Anthony AJ Leal, outstanding academic student, where as he was former professor in the present 4.3 GPA, thirty-one A.T.S. students, become top ranked student in Sullivan East House School class, 2024. And where as he did completed multiple college credits through building Royal Corps, completed four years of span, and was a member of multiple A.T.S. honor classes. Where as outside freshman, he gave a hall of fame award in ministry for the Southern Community Organization. Where as student, who took the state qualifier, three years running in wrestling, three years of track, two years of football, culinary club, vice president, later hunter's club, student council, and the National Hunter Society. And where as corporate received following awards, an honor, Eagle Scout, which will be YO, Paul Harris Fellowship, the Rotary, accepted it as a Cook Grand Challenge under program at UT Naperville. Tennessee Virginia Scholar, awarded the Ann Dallas Dudley 2000 Student Ambassador from the Secretary of State's Office, graduate of the Governor's School of Science and Engineering, 2023 UT campus. 2024 Cook Around the World Competition at Walt Disney's World Pepcock Center, and 2005 hour of community service. Therefore, I, Sullivan County Mayor Richard Vunble, on behalf of Sullivan County Commission, hereby proclaim, with others, June 20, 2024, a fascinating course day in Sullivan County. And encourage also, join in celebrating AJ's, specifically, leadership and outstanding contribution to Sullivan County. AJ, please take our congratulations on representing your house. No one's done that much, gotta have something. Thank you to your family and the commission for bringing you up here, and I know, I remember you all were liking that picture, so. Do we have somebody to set up?
I'll take it.
I'll take it.
Well, that is a big, that's quite a word. So, our final recognition, the iron man, the net, right? If you come forward.
DB.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Mr. DB, I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me. I didn't want to start to mess up your name, with a name like Vunble, which comes up often in the net. Proclamation in honor of Ryan Vunble, outstanding academic student. Where as line achieved 4.85 GPA, and ranked number one academic student in the Sullivan High School class, 2024. Where as- Whereas Ryan completed eighteen AP and sixteen hundred classes during high school. And whereas he is a national merit finalist, will be attending the University of Alabama with full honors scholarship, where he is double major in the left wing of the American Union. And whereas, that's a feeling that continues to be remarkably focused in the driven award and so secondary pursuits. In honor thereof, I would refer to Mayor Southern County, on behalf of the Southern County Commission, provide from plan, June twenty-two thousand twenty-four, along with your colleagues, at Ryan Bynett Day in Southern County, and encourage all students to join and celebrate Ryan's exemplary leadership and outstanding contribution to Southern County. Congratulations, Ryan, and a pretty good crowd. Thank you for recognizing these young people and their outstanding achievements. And if you have to take your shit in the room, I think we probably do. This is product of your hard work, and I don't want you to ever do, that Southern County Commission doesn't appreciate that. And I think our records over the years indicate that in the way we have supported the Southern County school system. And both records are good. And we look forward to continuing that sport. So, we will get back to our regular order. Consent agenda. Items three, four, five, six, and seven have been requested to be placed on the consent Two also, and I'm two also. So, having written straight now, two, three, four, five, six, and seven have been requested, moved by Chris Garner, adopted, sent about, crossed, and blocked. Does anybody have any objection to consent agenda as published? As you know, you can block anything off the seat if I made for a discussion, because the consent agenda requires that you have it published. Seeing none on the board, open, please cast your vote and vote for the adopted consent agenda. Everyone vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? That's the first take vote.
Twenty-two, yes, do medicine.
Have received necessary authority, present the agenda as adopted as published. And that leads us to item number one, the committee ban over, we're working out some items number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a request of the landlord, I'd like to ask for item number one to be with thrown.
Mitch has requested that item number one be with thrown. Without objection, item number one is with thrown, thrown. Mr. Cal, you wish to be recognized for what purpose?
Oh, no.
Oh, you don't? Okay. So, wait, now you're. Okay. We're going to move on to item number eight. Mr. Cal, you're recognized on item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the men of Southern County ARPA funds for two thousand twenty-four fiscal year to reflect the funds, and Mr. Bailey, I know we'd be glad to explain that if he may have any questions.
Anybody have any question? We have a motion and a second by Commissioner here on item number eight. Any question for sponsor?
And the paper that you're passing out is for agreement, that goes along with our page.
They're getting, they're allowed, I'll give out a way on the post, first reading. This is, are you requesting wave of rose?
Wave of rose. And that is what passes.
Spencer has a request, wave of rose for immediate introduction and adoption of item number eight, which is being issued at every speed. It will take just a minute to let the issue peruse that before we call the vote, have a proper closing dance. It'll take just a minute to get that passed out. And just, I guess inside, this is a, we're incorporating in our book and distributed to our area utilities, including Crystal and King Ford City Utilities. And it's well in void, instruction allowed by this nine point six million dollar, it's well underway, and we are incorporating it to not be able to reverse our local utilities for expenses that we've earned by making approved improvements in our utility and water delivery systems. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Open, please cast your vote on item number eight. Since you've got this, I'm going to leave the board open as long as you need to take the vote. Just in size, you have to approve this, this distribution target. Everyone vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? That's our take vote.
Twenty-one, yes, one, no, two, yes.
Having received necessary authority, item number eight is adopted, and this add, this money is in progress, and this is just the appropriation that we have to through the County Commission to accept the grant for the opportunity and get it on our books, which is our. Next up, item nine, Mr. Cal, you're ready to vote on item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the men of General Fund two thousand twenty-four fiscal year budget to complete an orderly process of finishing it due to the operations. And you have a list in the Senate resolution that gives you the ones that we are finishing up, and it's in total of sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And I'm asking for wave of rose. If there's any questions, you can ask Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Cal moves to immediate introduction and adoption of item number nine, consecutively by Commissioner King. Any question, any questions, all of them. Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, see the board open, please cast your vote on item number nine. Wave of rose. For our sixth vote to pass. Everyone vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? That's our take vote.
Twenty-two, yes, do medicine.
Have received necessary authority, the item is hanging. And that completes our agenda, our resident agenda proceeding, and I would again like to congratulate our outstanding young students and all the students from Southern County Schools, for, 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 and, 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 and,[1754.14]